You're good. It's fine, I like it.
Tell you good.
All right, everybody, we're starting a little bit late tonight, but if we are ready to rock and roll, I would like to get this meeting called to order. It is seven oh two. First item on the agenda is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands on the nation under God, in its little with liberty and trust its ground.
All right. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for coming. Uh, next we'll do the roll, we'll call the roll, and I believe that Trucky Baglin is participating remotely via Zoom.
Trusty Pappy? Trusty Baglin?
Here.
You, trustee huh?
Here.
President Gurkki?
Here.
Trusty Doorward?
Yeah.
Trusty Bart?
Here.
Trusty Man?
President.
Thank you.
All right, we have a quorum, we will continue. Next on the agenda is public comments, limited to five minutes per person, anything not on the agenda. Seeing as we don't have anybody here. We'll move on. You're not part of the public, you're, you guys are supposed to be. Quiet you. All right, next we have the consent agenda, uh, the minutes of November second and approved general fund water and sewage invoices.
Make a motion to approve consent agendas.
A second.
All right, I have a motion in a second, anybody have any questions? Now I'll call the vote, all those in favor?
Yeah.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next we have report on village committees. The first one that we have is the. Planning Commission. Um, we held public hearings. Wait, no we didn't, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the minutes. We met to approve, give me one second. I think that I'd be more prepared here. Nailed it. All right. Sorry about that, so we had a, a planning commission meeting on November sixth. Um, we were there pretty much to discuss, um. Industrial Park CSMs and then to set public hearings for a few different things for Hillcrest. Um, for their subdivision and then also. Uh, a zoning change request for a resident. To go from RS one to RS two. Are any questions? All right. If not, we'll move on to the report from the Parks and Recreation Committee.
All right, so we actually just met on Monday night, which was a good meeting, we discussed the holiday tree lighting and the events the day of. Um, Santa is going to be joining us that evening again, so that's wonderful. Trusty Miley was able to secure the choir, uh, to come and sing, one of the St. John's Church choir is gonna come sing. Um, so we've got everything going for the day of the holiday tree lighting, super exciting. Uh, thank you to our DPW staff for putting up the holiday lights on the very large Christmas trees. Um, they did a great job, so can't wait to see it all kind of come together. And from what I understand, nine out of the ten holiday trees were spoken for, or ten out of ten.
Yeah.
Good, good.
Excellent.
They're all gone. Awesome. Uh, we also met with, uh, the Community Rivers Program from Nature Ridge, um. They came in and kind of gave us a little bit of a proposal on. The programs that they offer within the community for the donation that we provide them each year. Uh, so we're excited to learn more about those and try and bring more of those into the community, uh, which will be great. And lastly, we talked about the winter walk and we've got it scheduled for January nineteenth, so watch for continued planning time now.
All right, excellent, any questions for trustee Bart? Now we'll move on to the hundred and fiftieth anniversary subcommittee, also chaired by trustee Bart.
All right, so we just had our subcommittee meeting about an hour ago, it was a very good meeting tonight, we were able to solidify. Um, a schedule for the day of. Um, but we are going to start putting together all the numbers and start booking out all of the. The vendors and everything for the day on, so continue to watch for further communications on social media about that. Um, and then we're not gonna meet again hopefully till January, so. Very good productive meeting today and looking forward to really getting the hundred and fiftieth solidified for June.
Excellent. Any other questions?
What is my question? Are you expecting me to find something older than nineteen seventy four in the time capsule?
Are we expecting to find something older? Um, I personally have no idea because I don't even know what's in there, what year it was buried.
That's, that is nineteen seventy four.
So that would be the one that will. Open and hopefully there's some, some stuff in there.
Yeah, they had intended that to be opened essentially either. When a half of them are still here, so.
All right, any other questions? All right, we will move on then. Uh, to reports on operations. So the only thing that I have that I wanted to bring up to everybody is I know that we were all excited and celebrating, um, having a contract with Hulkson Mechanical. I still haven't seen a contract to sign, so I don't know. We can maybe push that and try to see if we can get on, uh, Jim Larkin. A little bit and say what's going on.
Last I heard he has the same edits that we gave him, so.
Excellent, so that's all I really have, other than, um. You know, I, I want to say I'm very thankful for the board that we have and for our DPW and all our departments. Obviously coming up on Thanksgiving, it's a time for reflection of everybody that's. Important in your life and this one, everybody know that you guys are very important. We're like a family up here, so I do appreciate all the hard work that everyone's done. Any questions with me? I didn't think so, on to the village administrator.
Alrighty, I had a lengthy report, so I'll just kind of give you some highlights here. Um, first off, uh, Strand and their contractors are working on the surveying and geotechnical items within the TID, so that continues to progress. We had a couple of good mil- meetings with both Hillcrest and then our engineers on proper use of fill. Um, so again, we discussed, uh, using some proceeds from the TID and the grading that's needed down there. Help facilitate moving some of that fill off of the northern, northern area of the village in order to help better prepare and sell those lots as well. Um, so that's still in the works, just trying to determine amounts and what's needed at both sites. Um, uh, Clerk Johnson, uh, worked on and just continued to work on a checklist for, uh, commercial developers as we proceeded in the industrial park. That's gonna be really important as we have a lot of stuff going on next year, keeping everybody, um, uh, moving forward. Our commercial inspector was a big piece of that too, uh, educating both of us on what was needed and those kind of documents, so we appreciate his efforts as well. Um, and I, uh, under, uh, commercial growth, uh, we did announce our October, uh, been some month, uh, mobile, that feels like it was so long ago, but. We visited, uh, mobile and had a great time, uh, learning, learning from Tom over there, uh, the uniqueness of that building, it was pretty, pretty cool. Um, under fiscal policy, obviously we adopted budget, so thank you all for doing that. Um, we, uh, did apply, uh, we finished our application, put in funding for Martin Drive for the SDP local dollars. Um, and then Eric attended a, uh, hour of meeting, but he can share a little bit later for those dollars as well. Um, the tree lighting, I believe we have everything squared away, uh, when it comes to that, so look forward to celebrating that November twenty fifth. We welcomed, of course, our new paramedic, so excited to see her get up and running. Um, Digicorp, uh, there's been a lot of back and forth with Digicorp, if you don't remember, they're the contractors we hired way back in spring to help facilitate the email and Microsoft changeover. Um, as far as we're concerned, we have all of our information with them to facilitate that transfer. Uh, Digicorp right now is just fighting with Microsoft and licensing and things like that, that we paid for them to do, so they're continuing to move forward on that. Um, and then if you guys didn't see, uh, the news or the post that went out tonight, the Friends of Perdonia Parks and Recreation Group officially got, uh, up and running, which is awesome. Um, so again, this is a separate nonprofit group, uh, just community minded volunteers that are willing to support. And give time to our parks and rec operations, so that is awesome as well. And then finally, I can't tell you too much details, but President Gurkki and I had a really good meeting. With a corporate donor for the splash bank. And when we can announce that news, we will do so, but it's definitely, definitely positive and something we should be proud of, so. Um, last, I'll just leave you with, don't forget. We have a party coming up, if you were able, able to join, September fourteenth, feel free to bring your family, um. Uh, parties from both the village and the town, welcome to join, it's a nice way for us to kind of, uh, celebrate and have a sense of camaraderie together, so. Thank you.
All right, any questions of the administrator?
I'm sorry to be a plus, but, um. Um, we already have. Had comprehensive checklist for both developers and home builders on file. I'm wondering what, are you, um, updating them or something?
I haven't seen.
If that exists, we have not seen that.
There should have been like maybe a three or four of each on file. Which in the convenience, well, cheers to the. Your, your, it wasn't any.
No, I haven't seen any, I've been through all of the files multiple times, I haven't seen.
Yeah.
A. Comprehensive checklist. Um, for new commercial builds.
Yep, and Roger didn't share that with us either, that's what he's done in the past, so. Roger Keisler, I mean.
Well, I don't know if Roger was involved, but they were coming in. And it, it was a. A packet had all of the, uh, relative, uh, coordinates and things of that nature, and they get to do what permits. What agency you see in the whole thing, basically, we were talking about. There should have been some go with it. Cause we've had, I don't know, we've just done that while we were on board, but we had. Recently, probably within the last ten years, we made those. Option.
Well, if anything, it's probably a good idea to revisit and take a look and everything anyway, just, uh, but yeah, maybe see if you can, I mean, I know. Thank you for that, I appreciate it.
Yeah. Kind of makes me wrong.
Yeah. All right, anything else for the administrator? Now we'll move on to the village marshal, um, Eric can't be here tonight and our. Chief is hunting, I believe. That'd be my guess. Our village marshal, I'm sorry. Chief's here, he's right there. All right, you're next. So anyway, uh, reports in the packet, any questions on the report? If not, then we will move on now to our lovely fire chief.
Um, in the packet, we have my reports, uh, monthly training stuff and what we've done, last month was fire prevention month, so we had. Open house, uh, down at fires, which was. Really well attended and, uh, fire prevention school business, we can swap out, this period of mission swap out, a lot of the. Part of our, uh, one year there, this basic program, elementary school, and that people were out there, it was off year, we take care of Divine Savior, which was our this year at St. John's Daycare. Um, so that we visited, uh, this year was St. John's and Divine Savior. As far as the thing, the thing news, we are going to do this paramedic updates, uh. So in, uh, May of twenty twenty three, we hired Josh, in October, we hired Crystal, Crystal's finishing up her, today she would have been. Think her last day, your afternoon to be signed off as paramedic, hoping. Um, I haven't heard anything yet. Um. But hopefully soon, uh, we get the green light of her, we do have accepted offer, have not yet got the paperwork, uh, from Casey Bayne, he is our third. Paramedic, uh, we tend to typically got cases starting on December eleven. Um, and I know that, that didn't kind of coincide with where we wanted him, uh, as far as January first, but I don't want to lose him. Uh, but we also have probably three weeks of. Weird shifts, where I work, seeing draft and they get signed off, I don't have. So, um. We did put the, uh, paramedic intercept unit in service this last month in October. Um, so that has less than everything on it, and they're good to go, we have used that on multiple occasions already. Uh, to run calls, I know Josh, and whatever your time, that'll shift. Uh, expedite our on scene time, you get there quicker, so that's, we're doing really well there.
Are there any changes you need, think you want to make with that vehicle as you're starting to use it?
Um, i- i- it's just the mindset of. Our. It, it's how we operate, uh, because a paramedic takes off by you with that vehicle. Um, it needs to get back to our station, paramedic will jump in with the ambulance, we then that vehicle sits somewhere. So we partnered up with Belgium, Belgium, we bring it back to our station, park it in our firehouse, which we thank them for that, so we're not involved in that. But as far as, uh, the operations are right now, uh, we're doing really well, we're gonna do it setup, it's just, you know, spontaneous, but it's, uh, level one. Um, no new application this last month in October, um, you see our call volumes there, call volumes for the ambulance, uh, skipped a little bit. In the month of, uh, September and October, um, but I'll tell you right now that month of November, we've been very busy, so. Almost that was the track that I thought I was just. Um, that's pretty good.
Excellent, so I just want to clarify that. The three paramedics that we said that were, we were told that we're never gonna get hired, that there wasn't a need for it, we, we hired all three of them?
We're double. Perfect.
Excellent, glad to hear.
Yeah, and we had a part time. Um, person is still part of that, that's so interesting.
That's outstanding.
I have not talked to her fully yet. Cause I don't know what I have to talk to the problems with that.
Right. But I think, you know, just to kind of reflect on that, I mean, that's, that's a complete reflection of our fire and EMS department, right? I mean, there's different places that people could go and there's obviously people that are out there in departments that are hiring and we were able to get three within a short period of time, so. Shout out to you guys for being awesome, shout out to Josh again for helping get the whole thing funded, um, just absolutely incredible and nice work.
Now, next task is to mitigate it. Okay. First off, putting it on a deep.
Yeah.
Those, those two would not have been found if nothing had happened.
Nice one. Yeah, and the social media posts were just outstanding too, I mean, you could see all the shares and everything else that was going on, so it was a big, big part of it as well.
What are the two fire incidents?
Oh, they could be car accidents, uh, or they could be unusual angles, I put that back in there.
Okay. And how would you assess the things, how things are going with the cooperation with the, their jurisdiction, is that? Helping out greatly right now?
Well, we're, we're training together, I mean, as far as the other jurisdictions like Wobblington and Melton together, um, we're working together, every, every month we have some kind of training together. Whether it's EMS, fire, where our engineers are working together. Um, so the departments are working together. Um, outside of the, the merger piece that they're based on.
But I mean, as far as call volume, it's, it's, it's helping out. Because I, I heard there was, you know, problems with the call volume, and that's why we need the cooperation.
Well, I mean, the difference. Um, sure, that's why we need cooperation, we need, we need cooperation by the departments to, um, here, so we do a thing called second test page, there's a. Fire, snow instructor fired, I get a city fire, um. That, Friday, we've got, it's about three thirty afternoon, up in Crystal Springs, Wobblington call, but all three departments get paid at the same time, so we have numbers there. Starts off, and we aren't behind the game. Um, you know, cause. At three thirty afternoon, most people aren't home yet, work, uh, the ones that are working on site affinity, we may only end up with one engine, but instead of that, we had. At least four engines there, it may be over, but. That's, that's what we, that's what we put this in place.
That's different, yeah.
Absolutely.
Four people, in fact, my department, my guys, my, my, I'll call them, right, asking who to get this. We have a bunch of fires, they're asking you to get it for car accidents and. You know, it's just added hands there, it's adding their hands up. You guys, you guys say that we can turn the vehicle around the off steering a little bit, that would even turn around, say.
So I'm not gonna say.
Do you feel like you'd be able to pull a matrix together, any kind of, uh? Like, not deliverables, but, uh, facts in a year from now saying, okay, well, this is what we were able to do so much better with having all three together versus where we were two years ago?
Yeah, some kind of metrics.
Matrix, then, thank you.
Do that way, and then also I'm, I'm looking to see our metrics to give, or the ambulance gotta think with our call times, response times. That would be a huge difference.
I'm looking forward to those numbers, it should be great. All right. Anything else for your chief? Thank you so much for everything you do all the time. We sincerely appreciate it. Onto Eric, Public Works Director.
The report is there, I'm only laying in the hat, got some barked on our new trees. Uh, then. Lightened. But with lights. Small trees are out, two more will be there on Monday. I'm gonna have you to go. And also, yeah, there's nothing in there, any purchase this month, so that's.
Outstanding.
So can I, can I do that?
Yeah, I mean. Did you, you guys got a chance to light the trees and see that they all work and they look decent and all that?
Nope, they're good.
You have to show them.
The other thing is leaves.
Leaves?
I think we. Stayed on it. And. I mean, Jason went through the village, then. You gotta hold out, so they will.
At least it's not snowing.
Don't see that.
And then we changed.
And my bad, all right, anything else?
Better than the rain, right?
Yeah, I guess.
Maybe not.
All right, if not, then we'll move on to our clerk.
I don't have anything to add except to highlight the, um, the, um, the, oh my gosh, sorry. Oh yes, thank you, so, um, we had a, uh, a communication from WEC about, um. Election offices in other states, um, receiving envelopes filled with fentanyl. Um, so I emailed that to Melissa who handles our mail, I emailed it to our, um, our marshal and, um, I gave it to Sergeant Lee, so. Checked all the boxes that WEC recommended. Um, also, um, next. Meeting, we're gonna be appointing, well, I'm gonna bring a list to for appointment for, um, our fabulous election inspectors that have stepped up to the plate for the twenty twenty four cycle. I'm really excited about our team, I'm really looking forward to working with them. Um, and then I just also added our, um, uh, incumbent deadlines for candidate members.
Alright. And I'll add, Michelle conducted an awesome four hour training for our chief inspectors this week, so.
That was great, great questions, there was good feedback, it was, uh, and with a long, but it was fun. And fruitful, I think.
All right. Anything else for our clerk?
Can I just say I'm thankful for Michelle and all the work that you do, speaking of being thankful for the season, we've asked a lot of you all the time, so I appreciate. The promptness and the willingness to help whenever, thanks.
It's gonna feel good to write props, second notes to yourself. Props to you, perfect.
Trusty Bart said, how awesome are you?
That'll be fun to listen to, huh?
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, let's move on to our awesome treasurer.
Don't have anything to add to my, um, other than today I'm doing just all the. Water bills that were not paid. On to the tackle, so that was. A challenge, and I did know all any test foods. Decided. The tackles. It was a big water day today.
Excellent.
Yeah.
But we also learned new ways to do it.
We did, we did last year. I had to enter each one. Each property, I had two different countries, one single.
Mm-hmm.
All called blown this year.
Nice.
Amazing, but when I double checked it, there was two that didn't upload properly, so I had to manually those, but that was nothing to do. Went much better.
Excellent.
But. Every year, every minute. Then a learning process.
Yeah.
And I too am thankful for Michelle. Taking all that off.
Write that down.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, and I do appreciate Chris, I mean, all the tips that are happening, I mean, we've got a good team here.
We really do, yeah, we're rolling, which is nice. And we're, I'm thankful for you, I know that everybody here is thankful for you for everything that you've done to. Have the willingness this year to switch up what you've been doing in the past and saying, hey, take one for the team, you're doing a great job. Right, absolutely, so thank you for your work.
It was a work of practice, but I think we're doing good and.
Excellent. We're just all full of good.
Everybody should go home.
Feels today, yeah.
Thanks for you, Dan.
Eric, did I tell you I was thankful for you today? Rick, I bet you're bummed you're not here, this is fun.
Yeah, it's a really feel-good meeting, but I don't hear any, any praises for me.
Oh, well, we're appreciative of you.
Surgery was successful.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, all right, well, uh, let's, any questions for Melissa at all? Let's move on to our county district two supervisor, who I'm also thankful for.
All right, a few things, uh, a few things I've got, so, um, the county right now is working on building a brine shed over at the highway department, they. Uh, opened up bids on Tuesday, voted on them this morning, I haven't heard who won the bid or when they're starting on that, but I believe they had six hundred thousand dollars set aside to do that. So as soon as I know more information, I will fill everyone in, um.
Is that a red in Quabica, right?
No, that's the one in, in Washington, yeah. Um. Last thing, the next thing I've got is the salary thing, um, I know there was at the last meeting, that came up in regards to salaries and how much supervisors should get, I voted against it. Um, they wanted a five point nine percent increase, it's not that I'm not opposed to the increase, I just think as. Civil servants, we do a job, we're there twice a month and once for a committee, I don't think it needs to be a six percent increase after we completely botched this EMS funding. The ARPA funds, I just don't think it was something that we deserve, we get paid, in my opinion, pretty well for what we do up there anyway. Um, so I voted it down, I know it came back up again today, unfortunately I had. Uh, prior engagement, I wasn't able to make it, so I'm not sure how the vote ended up, if it. Cause there's some confusion, my personal thought is, this is just, this is what irritates me about government, to be completely honest, we voted it down. So I assumed it reverted back to what we already get paid, apparently that's not the case, so they had to bring up a whole new resolution today to figure out who's gonna get paid what, so god only knows what. Could have been an eight percent raise from what they initially had discussed, I'm not totally sure for that.
They didn't, they didn't reach the two thirds majority, so.
No, but now this time they wanna do it now, it was only fifty percent because they're just sitting in a salary for. Actually, I, I'll find out more information, I was not able to attend.
How much is the pay?
Uh, it's four hundred and eighty dollars a month, so it's like five thousand, six hundred, something sixty.
Twenty twenty, it was like forty seven hundred.
Yeah.
Plus minus then, you know, I mean.
Yeah, it went up, it went up two years ago, I think around five percent, but I just think, like I said, me personally, I just think it doesn't look good. A lot of people are struggling right now to pay rent and mortgages and gas bills and groceries, and I just, again, everyone's like, well, it's only twenty dollars a month, I get it. But I just don't think that looks good, we represent. A majority of the people and a lot of people are hurting right now, and I just didn't think it looked good for us to just take more just because we felt we needed to. My personal opinion, right or wrong, that's just where I stood on the whole. Um, situation, the last thing I've got. Is, uh, we did approve a public safety, um. To build a dispatch center for one point one million dollars, that's gonna come out of the ARPA funds, no, it is not gonna come out of EMS funding, we. We're already, we double checked it that, so that leaves the county at right now, last I checked, like four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, they got left, uh, seventeen point three million dollars, so we'll be able to get the dispatch center. So we were able to come to some kind of compromise, we get EMS, the funding that we needed and building a dispatch center, so. Um. And then on another note, if you all indulge me, um. This is tough for me to do, but, um, I just wanted to let everyone know, I am not gonna be running for reelection for the village or the county. It's been, um. It's been a great six years here, I'm glad I did it, um, I would encourage anyone who. Who's thinking about it to do it, I've made a lot of. Lifetime friends, I've learned a lot. Through this time, and I take voting very seriously, I know a lot of men and women have died, and to have people actually show up and vote for you to thi- think that you were the. Better candidate or candidate that could help, I just want people to know I gave everything I had. You know. At the time I was here, so, um, I'm very proud of all the things we've accomplished here at the village. I'm very proud of things I did at the county in the last four years through unprecedented circumstances through COVID and. You know, I, we stood for constitutional rights, we stood for EMS. You know, I s- I stood up for the little guy, I thought, and. I want to thank everyone that voted for me and. All support I've had through years, I, I take this seriously and I'm gonna miss it. And, uh. I'm very grateful for everything and all the support and all the people that have stood by. By me, I moved down here and I didn't owe anybody, this is home and. It's tough to give up, but, uh, I got a growing family and my business is really starting to get really busy, so it's just time for me, me and my wife, a long conversation, it's just time. For me to step aside right now and focus on my family, but, um, I want to thank everyone for everything it meant, it means. For everything, it meant, it means a lot to me, and like I said, I took this seriously, and I hope I, I did a good job and that everyone that voted for me is proud. Of the work that I did, so, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, Josh, for everything that you've done and that you continue to do. We certainly uh, we certainly appreciate the time that you've committed. You know, obviously, like you were saying, that there's time that comes out of your, your family, there's time that comes out of. Um work, you know, we, we all make that sacrifice here, and we all understand how important it is, so we're all proud of you, and we appreciate the service that you gave. Both at the county level and also uh at the village board level.
Yeah, and to, to add to Dan's comments, uh yeah, I definitely appreciate you, Josh. We went from being rivals when we first met in our first election, to being uh super close friends, so. You're right, lifetime friendships have been built in these last six years, and we've accomplished a, a great deal, uh large part to you. So, thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
Absolutely, and honestly, it's Josh's fault that I'm up here, so um he's wanna drag me into all this, so. I guess, take that how you want.
But I'd like to mention something, representing the previous administration, um I worked with you for. It must have been like six, four years.
Four years.
And you were one of the stars in what I had described as the best village board I have ever worked in. And that was um, yeah, that memory is one really responsible for having. Believe dinner that year, and uh I announced that, um to the whole group, all of us, relatives and I, and my top savings. Um I've heard that everything you've said.
Thank you, Dan, I appreciate that. Anybody else?
I'm thankful for you, John. I won't get too sappy, but I am thankful, we've had this conversation before, in the short time that we've sat on the board together, I actually have learned quite a bit from you. Um and I, I definitely appreciate all the time that you've given me and things that you've taught me, and I will miss that. Um but I do wish you the best in your endeavors, and I know how important family is, and they're only little for so long, so love every minute.
Also appreciate all the hard work you did, Josh, I could, I could see, see it, it's very evident, um. And then your vigilance, you just, just spoke about how you didn't deserve a raise, and. There's not many politicians out there that say that. And, but I think it takes a lot of integrity to say that, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Whoa, point of order. Gotta get that one in there.
Yeah.
Alright, any other kind words or anything else from our district two supervisor?
We needed.
I will be serving out the remainder of my term, so I'm not stepping down, I am a servant all the way through eight, so I'm serving out the whole, it's like, whoa. No, 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 I'm serving my whole terms, I'm not stepping down, I'm just not ready for reelection.
Excellent, thank you, Josh, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, was deep and awesome. Uh we will move on then for items for discussion and or action. The first um one that we have is. Tell me something, okay, uh the first one that we have is a certified survey map, this is what came before planning commission. Um it's a motion to approve the CSM twenty three point or dash four. And again, what that does is it uh divides lots, I believe this is the one that divides for the pulse and correct?
Correct, yep.
Um and then there were some corrections that we took out of planning commission on the signature lines, but as you can see in the packet, Dan, I think that was your concern. Those have been corrected. So I would entertain a motion for that.
How many good motion?
I'll second it.
Alright, now I have a motion in a second, do we have any questions, concerns? Alright, it's now, I'll call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Next, we have a motion to approve addition to the village of Fredonia employee handbook section Q full-time fire medic, uh I don't know.
Well, I wrote the memo, but why doesn't chief speak to it?
Okay.
Well, this will clarify um how we change our fire medics, um fire medics are. Gathered under little different rules, one that I always say earlier can set, um so we, we had a little bit of. Growing pains as we were developing this, and we didn't really fully understand it uh as we got going. Um so kind of flying and playing ability at the same time with uh we, the fire meds. Uh we decided they don't have twenty four, forty eight, twenty four hours on before you get off, and um their overtime is paid after. Hundred and six hours every two weeks or two hundred and twelve hours every four weeks or twenty days. Our program here with this will get us to the uh we'll be doing a twenty eight day uh cycle. They'll get paid every two weeks, that first twenty, first fourteen days will be a minus six hours flat paid for them. And then we will adjust their pay down to twenty eight day, we'll adjust their pay to go to that on that second paycheck. Uh of every twenty days, so that's, that's one piece of it, um and then the second piece of it was kind of adjusting the. Uh vacation time, um vacation time, it's in the employee uniform, currently served the purpose of the forty hour a week. Uh employees, um it was brought to our attention by Josh, our new uh new first paramedic here that. Didn't quite seem right, compared to what Fort Washington was offering, I talked to what Jackson was offering. Uh their fire medics can uh the time, the paid time off, vacation time is not uh equivalent. It would take them almost, what, it takes them three times um. As long to get a full day off, because they work twenty four hours, so a normal forty hour employee. Works one third of the time, and you get a day off, and Josh has to work three times as long, bringing his two parts. So we adjusted that um based on twenty nine hundred and twelve hours of uh. Work that they do in a full year, um there's been two thousand eighty hours, that's been a thirty five percent difference.
So what I, what, the way I did it was, I took, I took our lease, you know, by forty. And figured out how many hours you earn. And then I did it by thinking three, because that's what the paramedics come, my act and. Brian's man, it's identical to the one, I can move a little bit higher, and it, it worked out, so. Now I have to double check, the reason for the difference in the overtime, the twenty eight day versus just paying on their overtime every two weeks. It's actually been a better, different knowledge to. To pay them their overtime after the whole month, it's averaged out versus every two months.
It's just, yeah, it's just, oh, yeah, way more than being yourself, they were. One less gift that radio is distributed in the twenty eight days, which cuts us back that overtime by a point those.
That's a lot.
So it's a, it's a benefit to the village to do that, and then the PTO, then. Now we just use the man.
I like the math, the math works.
It's the math work, I got one to check and check, and Brian double checked, so. They came up with the thing.
Yeah, and then the last thing of the holiday day, the holiday pay, um we get the same of what your employees get, uh. If they're not, not working holiday, they just get eight hours put into the. Just keeping in mind that eight hours doesn't mean they get a day off, their day is.
Right.
Work one half two hours.
Yeah, yeah.
It's weekend, it's, it's all. Any questions about this, anybody?
The uh, the federal government is currently tinkering with the overtime as far as um. Southern people and one of these people have two different meanings, basically. And will, will this go into what they're suggesting their role is gonna become, and then check on now?
This doesn't affect that because that's for Thomas.
Uh what the, what, are you, are you talking about that article that was in the magazine, that's for salary people, like.
Right, right.
The paramedics are not salary.
They considered already then?
Yes.
Alright, I make the motion to approve the village for going to handbook.
I'll second it.
Alright, any other discussion? I will call the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, next we have correspondence, which is none, right? Except for the, again, don't forget about the holiday party, everyone, everyone.
Want to make a note on holiday party, which Chris your guys have put on the invite?
Yeah.
Everybody to bring it in to pass, Chris is gonna provide the main meet, right?
Yep.
But we all, we all do this.
Little signage.
To go west, the sign occasion or whatever.
Are you gonna do like a sign up thing so that we don't all bring cheese and crackers or something? I'm just saying.
Just so you know, the, the town is beating you guys, because it got three RSVPs out of the five board board members, so.
Aren't they special?
Oh, one of them, one of them.
Yeah, so long story short, uh let us know if you can make it and what you're gonna bring. It'd be great, ugly sweaters are perfect too, okay, uh any other, other items for future consideration? If not, we're ready to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, uh.
Tactical difficulties.
Uh that's fine, opposed, motion carries unanimously, we are out at seven forty three, thank you, everybody.